Good evening, members. Thank you for your confidence. We move on to the second item on the agenda tonight, the appointment of a vice-chairman. May I ask your agreement that councillor Maurice Bayham be appointed as vice-chairman of this Central Area Planning Committee for the remainder of the council year 2016 to 17? Thank you. May I invite councillor Bayham to take his place here on the dais. Well, good evening councillors and members of the public. I apologise for the delay. We had a few rather long-winded items to get through on the Eastern Planning Committee, which comes before this one. Before we commence the meeting, I'd like to draw your attention to the fire regulations, which are on the screen behind me in the small screen up there. And could you also please ensure that your mobile phones are switched to silent? And councillors, can I please remind you to speak directly into the microphone and make sure that your card is pushed firmly into the console? Members of the public, I'd like to thank you for taking the interest in the planning committee, and we understand that certain things will be emotive, and would ask you to be respectful of those around you, and please refrain from any booing, cheering, or even applause. Thank you very much. So now we move to the main items of business. The minutes of the meeting which took place on the 5th of October 2016 have been laid on the table for the last thirty minutes. Are you content that I sign these as a correct record of that meeting? Thank you. Apologies for absence. Gary?
Thank you, Chairman. We've received apologies for absence from councillor Dennis Lee and councillor Liz Wheatley.
Thank you very much. Have members declared any interest before the meeting?
We haven't received any prior to the meeting, Chairman.
Thank you. Do members have any other non-percunory or disclosable percunory interests to declare? Jolly good. Let's move on. Gary, have there been any questions received from members of the public?
None received, Chairman.
Relevant updates. Peter, are there any updates to government guidance or legislation that the committee should be aware of?
Yes, thank you, Chairman, and good evening, members. I just have one update for you regarding the Planning and Housing Act 2016. The Housing and Planning Act, which I've referred to in previous updates to the committee, set out various requirements upon the council which came into force on the 1st of October. A lot of the requirements relate to policy matters, relating to referendum and adoption of neighbourhood plans. However, there's one change of importance regarding committee decision-making, and as of the 1st of October, there is a requirement for local planning authority when considering proposed development, which is an area for which a made neighbourhood development plan is in force, that any report must set out how the plan was taken into account in making a recommendation. At present, you'll be aware that we do not have any made neighbourhood plans. However, members will be aware that some are now progressing, and therefore, once adopted, all reports will have regard to the Housing and Planning Act requirement, and each report put forward to the committee will identify how the plan has been taken into account. Happy to take any questions on that. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Peter. Right, quarterly planning enforcement report. Beth, can you introduce the report to the committee, please?
Thank you, Chairman. The purpose of this report is to provide members with an update on progress for the Planning Enforcement Service for the quarter of July to September 2016. If I take you first, two pages, eight and nine, you'll see that the two longstanding cases are now moving forward again, and I'm hoping that this will provide you with some assurance that they are receiving attention from officers. If I then take you to page 12, Table 1, you'll note that our cases on hand figure continues to fall despite still receiving high numbers of complaints. And on page 13, Table 3, you'll note that we hit 100% against our performance indicator for the quarter. In terms of appeals lodged, which is on page 15, you'll note that an appeal against a remedial notice has been lodged in respect of a high hedge in Elstead. And in terms of notices served, on page 16, you'll see that two enforcement notices in the central area have been issued. One at Heather Bray, which is a large outbuilding. Compliance with that notice is well underway. Planning permission has been granted for a smaller building, which requires two of the walls of the unlawful building, and as soon as the planning permission has been fully implemented, we'll be able to close that one down. 93 Funkham Street relates to roof alterations, and as far as officers are aware, although we haven't received confirmation from PINS yet, we do believe an appeal will be made against that one. That concludes my update. Chairman, I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. Members, any comments? Councillor Peter Martin?
Only to say thank you on a further improvement. I think this is becoming like a worn record. Each quarter, we see yet more of an improvement, and I think, thank you to Beth and her team for continuing with their close encounters with all matters of appeals and all matters concerning enforcement. I'd like that recorded as a thank you from the committee.
Thank you, and I'd like to echo those comments. Anybody else like to comment? No? Okay, so we now just note that in the event of site inspections being necessary as a result of consideration of the applications at this meeting, these will be held on Monday 5th of December at a time to be agreed. Now, to move to the planning applications, item A1, which is reference WA 2016 1554. Gary's looking at me a bit concerned. Have I gone wrong?
No.
Okay, right, thank you. Yes, land at Pine Cottage, Pete Common, Elstead, GUH6DX. Chris, would you like to introduce the application to the committee, please?
Thank you, Chairman. This application seeks planning permission for the erection of two detached dwellings. Members will recall the application was deferred at the committee of the 5th of October to provide an assessment of the proposal against the Elstead village design statement. This now forms part of the updated report. There's been one update since the publication of the agenda. An additional supporting statement has been received from the applicant's agent. Much of the statement reiterates points covered in the previous submissions. However, the statement does confirm that landscaping works have been undertaken to the site boundaries, cutting back registration to remove any confusion over the dimensions of the site. This is the location plan for the site. The site's outlined in red. It falls within the settlement of the Elstead village. Pine Cottage is to the west here, and you can see that the property to the east is Terence Cottage, and you've got Red House Lane that runs to the north of the site, and Peak Common to the south. This is an aerial photograph of the site. The area of hard standing is quite clear from this aerial photograph, which is in the middle of the site here. It's in association with the use as a storage depot for coaches. Furthermore, you can see from the photograph that the land to the north and to the east is comprised of a mixed residential form of development. And this is the proposed block plan. You can see the two detached buildings, two detached properties are proposed. Plot 1 is on the left of those two there, and plot 2 is on the right-hand side. Marking is proposed in front and to the side of these two dwellings, and three spaces are proposed for each of the properties. The horse chestnut tree, which is referred to in the officer's report, is at the rear of the site, just outside of the site boundary, which I'm marking there. You can also see from the plan that the proposal would follow the building line of Pine Cottage, which is next to it. These are some photographs from the site. The bottom left-hand photograph is taken from Pete Common, looking towards the application site. Pine Cottage is the dwelling on the left there, and it's the space to the right of that building where the two dwellings are proposed. The photograph on the bottom right shows the hard standing within the site. This part of the site would form the area that would be the curtilage of plot 1. These are two further photographs from within the site. The photograph on the bottom left is looking towards Terence Cottage, and it's the part of the site that would be occupied by plot 2. And the photograph on the bottom right shows the relationship with Wood View, which is to the rear. This plan's been provided to clarify the approximate distances of separation. Plot 2 is the closest to the shared boundaries with Wood Cottage and Terence Cottage, which is on the right-hand side there. Plot 2 has a garden depth that varies between approximately 13.8 metres and approximately 5.8 metres, and incorporates a single-story element at the rear, which ensures that the first floor is set back slightly further from the boundary. Notably, the rear wall-to-rear wall separation is shown on the plan at approximately 26 metres between the rear of plot 2 and Wood View. And these are the proposed elevations and floor plans. The proposed dwellings would have a maximum height of approximately seven metres, and both would provide two four-bedroom dwellings in two-story form. There are some slight variations in the principal elevations. You can see here the location of the... there's a kind of a bay window on one plot and not on the other. This is the proposed street scene view. You can see the spacing between the proposed dwellings and the existing. The drawing gives an indication of the relationship in terms of both design and scale. And these are the determining issues. Officers consider the matters of principle and technical opinion are the loss of the commercial land and the lawful use of the site, the impact on the green belt and rural settlement, housing land supply, loss of commercial land, the standard of accommodation and amenity space, the effect on the SPA and SAC, impact in terms of highways, access and parking and trees. In terms of the main matters of judgment, we've identified that those are the impact on visual amenity and compliance with the Elstead village design statement, and the impact on residential amenity. Officers consider the proposal to be acceptable with regards to the impact on the character of the area and residential amenities, and the proposal has been considered not to conflict with the objectives of the Elstead village design statement. For the reasons set out in the officer's report, the application is recommended for approval. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Chris. This is a public speaking item. The procedure has hopefully been explained to you, and is also detailed on the back of the laminated cards on your seats, and Gary's coming to help if need be. May I first invite the opponent, Juliette Williams, to speak? Good evening, Mrs. Williams. You have four minutes from when you begin speaking.
Thank you, Chairman and councillors. As we stated last month, we are not objecting to the development per se. We are objecting to plot 2, which will have a hugely negative impact on the way us and our three young children live. The butlers, our neighbours, have lived in Terence Cottage for 40 years, and we have lived in Wood View for 11 years. We chose Wood View because of its semi-open aspect and the fact that properties do not look over each other, and are in well-spaced plots, not on top of each other. Plot 2 is proposed less than six metres from our back fence, with two rear-bedroom windows, one of which is set back to 8.5 metres, and the other six metres from our boundary. As our house is predominantly glass, plot 2 will be an overbearing structure that will completely destroy our semi-open aspect. The sheer scale of this building will totally dominate the way we live, affording us no privacy. At the moment, we have no-one overlooking our property, and this proposed house will overlook five of our main habitable rooms, including three bedrooms, the kitchen dining room, and the lounge. A significant percentage of the proposed plan goes against the Elstead village design statement. Plot 2 is significantly higher at 0.5 metres than existing properties around it. Its design does not match the two-up-two-down central porch design of surrounding houses. It allows parking in its front garden. It has a very small garden for a four-bedroomed house, and most importantly, it is being built in a plot area half the size of the properties around it. 300 square metres versus the average of 650 square metres for surrounding properties. Our emerging neighbourhood plan states that there is a need for smaller two-to-three-bed houses, but that they are built within the existing adopted parameters of the Elstead village design statement, and plot 2 does not meet these criteria. We also have the five-year supply of housing in accordance with the NPPF, and therefore, we do not feel that it's necessary to squeeze two properties into the space of one house. There are elements of the design which make the build of plot 2 impossible. The planners recommend that a five-metre exclusion zone be put around our horse chestnut tree, which is a key visual element within our garden. Given that the plot 2 wall has to be six metres from our boundary, it will be impossible for the rear walls of the house to be constructed. It will mean less than one metre to dig footings, excavate, put up scaffolding, without damaging our tree irreparably. Up until now, we've had a cordial relationship with the developers. However, this seems to have changed since the last central planning meeting. We were shocked to wake up two weeks ago and find a team of men clearing the hedging and land to the rear of our property. Whilst we know we do not have to be consulted, it is nevertheless a neighbourly thing to do. The butlers were hugely distressed when the contractors started arguing over boundary placement, and for us, we were upset and angry to discover a few small branches were cut away from our horse chestnut tree without our permission and/or our consultation. Since then, a digger has also been on site cleaning debris and working less than six metres away from our tree. However, no protection has been placed around it, and nor were we told of this work. As you can appreciate, we are absolutely devastated at the proposal of plot 2, and we respectfully urge you to take into consideration not just the material reasons why this plot is not in keeping with the locality and Elstead village design statement, but more importantly, our feelings. We don't want to have our loss of privacy forced on us with the development of this overbearing intrusive structure. We, the butlers and us, have worked hard to maintain these, our beloved forever family homes, and our enjoyment of them will be severely compromised if this plot goes ahead. Whilst reviewing this information tonight, please consider that there have been seven objections to this project, including the parish council planning subcommittee, two letters of comments, and no-one actively approving the build. This is an overbearing structure leading to loss of open aspect, distressing loss of privacy and visual amenity for both Wood View and Terence Cottage. For the butlers and us, this is hugely emotive, and so in summary, our three key issues are: the fact that we will lose the open aspect and enjoyment of our houses, lose the thing that we love most, and feel forced to consider moving from our forever family homes as a result of this development, and risk damage or loss of the horse chestnut tree, which is an important visual feature within our garden.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Now, may I invite the supporter, Andrew Bandoz, to speak? Good evening, Mr. Bandoz. You have four minutes from when you begin speaking.
Good evening, members. Following this planning application's deferral from the last planning committee, I would like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak again at this committee on behalf of my client's planning application for the two detached family cottages on land adjacent to Pine Cottage, Peak Common, Elstead. My intention is not to repeat my last speech, but to keep this brief and draw only on the key considerations. Firstly, we welcome the fact that your planning officers continue to provide their full support to the scheme and have recommended approval. The officer's report is very detailed and thorough, and covers all the material planning issues pertaining to this development proposal, including addressing the neighbours' concerns raised at the last committee and just now. In this regard, since the last meeting, my clients have carried out landscape works on the site to improve the boundary definition and thus remove any doubt as to the validity of the dimensions that have been given. The important characteristics of the site are: the site is located in a highly regarded residential location. It is a site that is classified as a brownfield site, and is therefore previously developed land. It has a lawful commercial use, allowing unrestrained coach, storage, and parking. The site is fully recognised by officers being an appropriate development site. We believe that it is beyond doubt our residential use on this location to be far more suitable and in keeping with the locality than the existing commercial use. The design characteristics of the proposal have had full regard to the Elstead village design statement and the local plan policies. Following an extensive pre-application process with officers, the scheme that we originally proposed was for four additional dwellings. This has now been reduced to just two cottages, as put before you now. Both of the proposed cottages pay close attention to the building form, details and materials of the adjoining properties in the village in general. The proposal is for two cottages that are without doubt in keeping with the village and street scene. It's felt that having just two dwellings on the application site would represent an inappropriate infill development, which is characteristic of the village, including the immediate locality. Careful attention is being given to the layout of the site and to the form, height, style, and detailing of the proposed dwellings, so that the scheme is reflective of the area. Careful attention is also being given to the treatment of the parking areas and the front boundary, in order that it would not appear suburban in appearance. All other aspects relating to this proposal meet the relevant policy requirements, including separation distances, amenity provision, which are covered in detail in the officer's report. My clients wish to be known that agreement has been reached with the owner of Terence Cottage in respect of the boundary treatment, and my client will be erecting a close-board fence to enhance their privacy. My client has also made an offer to improve the screening to the property to the rear, namely Wood View. My clients would be happy for this offer to become a formal condition in any approval that may be considered. Finally, it is well-known that, as we understand, appreciate by the neighbours, that my clients have consulted with them extensively throughout the application process. Numerous meetings have been held privately, as well as group presentations to the parish council and a wider resident meeting in Pot Common Cricket Pavilion. My clients are therefore delighted to note that not one of the residents of Peak Common have objected to this proposal. It is hoped that members will concur with their officers and the local residents and approve this proposal. That will provide a much-needed addition and sympathetic housing for the area. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bandoz. Now, I invite the ward member councillor Jenny Else to speak. Good evening councillor Else. You have four minutes from when you begin speaking.
Good evening. Thank you very much, Chairman. So, that the village must have more houses is indisputable, but I am not at all sure that Elstead needs many more large four-bedroomed houses. There will be opportunities, I'm sure, for those to be provided by developers over the next few years, but what we are in dire need of, along with many of Waverley's villages, is smaller, less expensive homes for the younger buyers. Whilst the design of the properties may be acceptable, they are cramped. I would go so far as to say, I believe it to be an overdevelopment of a site which has prime position over Elstead's cricket ground, and is very close to the existing properties. Perhaps two or three smaller dwellings would be far more suitable, so that the impact on the surrounding area is lessened. I've visited the site and the surrounding dwellings, and it's easy to see that the density and the bulk would definitely be out of keeping. I have every sympathy with the neighbours who are objecting, and whose enjoyment of their homes and gardens will almost certainly be affected negatively, and while I fully appreciate the right to review is not a planning matter, the overbearing nature of two large four-bedroomed houses is. I'd also like to point out that on page 19 of the report, it suggests that the removal of existing sheds will enable space for the new build, which may lull everybody into a false sense of security. As far as I can see, and I may be wrong, and I'm sure you'll correct me if I am, the removal of the sheds affects only the garden of Pine Cottage. There is a very, very large shed which housed coaches in the latter half of the garden of Pine Cottage, and I think that those are the sheds that the report refers to, but I may be wrong. Please correct me if I am. Thank you very much, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Else. As ward member, you will have the opportunity to speak again before the vote, should you wish. Members, I now open it up to you. Councillor Bolton?
Did I understand... pardon me. Thank you, Chairman. Did I understand the supporter was prepared to accept a further condition? If that is so, is that condition present in our documents, or is it to be added?
Officers.
Thank you, Chairman. It's not in the report as it stands. Happy for you to suggest some wording, or we can put some conditions around it. We have to consider whether it would be reasonable to apply or not in that instance, but please advise whether you'd like the wording around it to be applied, and we can put something to it. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Peter.
I'm not sure of the exact wording myself, but it seems to lead an air of uncertainty about what we may approve or disapprove.
If you wanted such an additional condition, you would have to propose it and get it second and voted on. While you're thinking about that, councillor James?
Thank you, Chairman. I concur with the ward member. It was very interesting that the applicant's agent, I think, repeated five times that they were cottages. I don't consider a four-bedroom, two bathrooms, a cottage. It's a house. Therefore, certainly the one on the right is definitely a house in a small plot, and to me, it's a court in a pint pot. The extension at the back is exactly the same for the house on the right as the one on the left, and the same as Pine Cottage, but when you look at the gardens at the back, they get smaller and smaller and smaller, so the distance at the back going out is far too great for the house on the right in relation to even the house on the left and Pine Cottage. So, the fact that it's similar, I would completely say is rubbish. They are completely different in the plots that they are going to be erected in. Therefore, as the line comes down on the back garden, Pine Cottage's got a long one, therefore, the second one should be slightly further in at the back, so it's not so near the neighbours, and certainly the one on the right, which is the same size as the one on the left, shouldn't... if it's there at all, and I don't think it should be, it should be much smaller at the back and much narrower, and perhaps should be a two-bedroomed, one-bathroom cottage, not a four-bedroom, two-bathroom house. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor James. Councillor Reynolds?
Thank you, Chairman. I know this area quite well. I live in Red House Lane, not too far away. I walk my dog around this area very, very often. I want to start by thanking the applicant for keeping me in the loop, and I assume possibly other councillors in terms of this development, and it was very useful to get updates on this application. I'm happy in principle with the development of this land. I think it's ripe for development. The houses are needed in Elstead, so I don't have any problems with that, but I fear I do have an issue with plot 2, and the house proposed on plot 2, as has been outlined by the ward member, and Mrs. James as well. Since in recent days, the plot has been cleared, which has actually been very informative for me, having seen it, and it's been able... given me the ability to really visualise plot 2, and how much of that plot the house will take, and how close it will be to its neighbours. And I'm afraid my view is that I think plot 2 would be better suited to a much smaller house. I have no problem with plot 1, I think. It's perhaps a touch overdevelopment, but I don't really have a great issue, but I do think plot 2, the house on plot 2, should be a lot smaller. So for that reason, I do think this is a touch of overdevelopment, and I'm likely not to support the officers. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Reynolds. Councillor Peter Martin?
Thank you, Chairman. I'm pleased in the report from officers to see that there's a good consideration of the loss of commercial land. Normally, I dislike losing commercial land and losing employment potential, but I have to say, I think this is a relatively small plot in a very strange place for a commercial development, and I think the case for losing the commercial space is a reasonable one for this. So I think the principle of putting housing here... I think the principle of putting housing here, I think, is acceptable. The question is whether two like this are acceptable. I'm not sure. I can see the argument in terms of plot two, although I do note in terms of the separation distances, the twenty-six point one metres between plot two and Woodview is not so very much different to the distance between the plot one location and Woodview, so maybe that's a little overstated. Of course, in planning law, you're not entitled to a view, and that's something which we can't disregard. I think it's very marginal, clearly plot one is acceptable and plot two is marginal. I haven't yet made up my mind, but I think that I will go in favour of going with the officers on this one, but I'm willing to listen to arguments from other councillors.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak on this? Councillor Bolton.
Thank you chairman. Can I ask that an extra condition be added, that suitable screening to the rear of plot two, site two, and between site two and Woodview be introduced?
I'll second that.
Thank you, I have a second I think.
Could that not be covered by the landscaping condition that should already be there? Peter.
Thank you chairman. Given the scale of development, we haven't introduced a proposed detailed landscaping condition in the report, in the recommendation, but if we were, we could apply that such condition to this recommendation, and that can include details of the boundary treatment as required. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Tom Martin.
I'm happy to support councillor Bolton, I wonder, I would have my own additional condition to add, I don't know if we need to take this separately, but essentially it will be the removal of permitted development rights, particularly given that this is, at best, a marginal case. I think if you were to look at a further four-metre extension on the back of that, which would be what the permitted development rights would allow you to do, that is then encroaching very heavily onto the neighbouring properties, and I think it would be absolutely appropriate to remove any future permitted development rights, perhaps of both properties, but in particular that plot two on the smaller area.
Is that not condition five? Do we not have that as condition five?
Thank you chairman, yes, it's picked up on condition five on page forty-four of your agenda. Thank you chairman.
So, you're happy with that, yes? Yeah, okay, jolly good. Right, so go back to councillor Bolton's proposal, seconded by councillor Peter Martin. All those in favour of introducing a standard-style landscaping condition which could include screening to that rear boundary, could I have those in favour please?
That's unanimous.
Thank you. So, does anybody else wish to speak on this? Councillor Else, would you like to come back?
Yes, thank you chairman, I would. I just would like to remind the committee and appeal to them to consider that there are three material considerations which appear to me to be broached. One is that we can see that the parish council objects on the basis that the area is subject to flooding. Now, we really do need to take heed of, take heed of and place considerable importance on local information in any planning application, as far as I'm concerned, but as far as this one is concerned, the two properties to the rear of the proposed development already flood in their gardens, and the water coming, the water comes perilously close to the house, how much worse would this be with these two large buildings in place? I think we need to think about that very carefully, for the sake of the residents who live by, and it is a question of judgement as to what the impact on residential amenity for surrounding residents would be, and I believe it would be a negative one. It's also a matter of judgement as to what the impact on visual amenity for surrounding residents would be, and I believe that would also be negligent. So, I really do urge you to think very carefully about this application and turn it down. Thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Else. So, we move to the, sorry councillor Thornton.
Sorry chairman, thank you. Yeah, I'd actually quite like to say, I used to live in Peak Common, down the bottom, I moved there when I was four, forty years ago, so that gives away my age. The flooding thing, it's an unmade road, Peak Common, and it's no worse and probably be less, the gardens in the other side probably won't flood as much, because obviously you're taking the concrete away. So, that's, I'm afraid, is a bit of a bad argument. I'd quite like to see smaller properties, because we are in need of one, two, three-bedroomed houses, so, but we've got the application in front of us, so I think I'll be going with the officers and supporting them. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Holder.
Thank you chairman. As regards the flooding, I presume that as this was a previous coach garage, that the surface is in fact tarmacled already, so that the additional flooding wouldn't be really relevant, so I'm just wondering why this is an issue.
Thank you. So, anybody else before we move to the recommendation? Right, so the recommendation is that subjects to conditions one to ten, plus an additional condition to cover approval of landscaping and screening, and informatives one to six as set out in the report, permission be granted. May I have those in favour of the recommendation to grant?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
And those against?
One, two, three, four, five.
Any abstentions? Thank you members, the recommendation to grant is agreed. So, we move on to item A two, WA. Let the people go first. Thank you. Item A two, WA two thousand and sixteen, one thousand and sixty-seven, Wheeler Street Nurseries, Wheeler Lane, Whitley, GU eight, five, QP. Jenny, would you like to introduce the application to the committee please?
Thank you chair. Start off with the location plan, obviously the application site is the Redline site. The aerial photograph, just to show the context of the buildings that are on there at the moment, and the surrounding area. Just some photographs of the site, just to give an idea of what's on the site at the moment. So, you've got large areas of hard standing, you've got quite a few derelict buildings, you've got the main sales building here, and the owner's house, and towards the back, you've got the polytunnels. This aerial photograph from two thousand and twelve and nineteen ninety-nine is just included to show that the extent of building back in the earlier aerial photo we have was pretty much as is on the site now. The map on the left is showing the settlement boundary, and the one on the right is showing the location of Wheeler Street Nursery in the settlement. This is the illustrative layout that's been produced. This is the access point, this is an outline application, and only access is proposed to be considered at this stage, and just the aerial photograph to give a reminder of the relationship of the proposed access with the main road and the junction. This is the extract from the pre-submission local plan. Again, you can see the boundary of the settlements in red, the area in the middle, which includes the Wheeler Street Nursery, is one of the sites proposed for possible removal from the green belt. We come down to the determining issues. As I've already said, the application's an outline application for up to twenty dwellings, with all matters reserved except for access. The site is in the green belt, where there's a presumption against inappropriate development. Development should not materially detract from the openness or visual amenity of the green belt. The National Planning Policy Framework states that the construction of new buildings is inappropriate in green belt. However, the MPPF also sets out a number of exceptions to this, which includes limited infilling or the partial or complete redevelopment of previously developed sites, providing that such development does not have a greater impact on the openness of the green belt. The MPPF also provides a definition of what's meant by the term previously developed land, which is land which is or was occupied by a permanent structure, including the curtilage of the developed land and any associated fixed service infrastructure. This excludes land that is or has been occupied by agricultural buildings, so therefore necessary to consider whether or not this site is an agricultural site or not. For clarification, a plant nursery is considered differently in planning terms to a garden centre. Plant nursery is primarily used to grow plants which are generally sold to the wholesale trade, although there can be a small element of retail sales to the public, and goods are generally not imported onto the site. A plant nursery is therefore considered to be a horticultural/agricultural use. A garden centre is primarily used for the sale of goods to the public, and goods sold are not limited to plants, nor even to gardening products. Importing products onto the site to be sold in the garden centre is common, and a garden centre is therefore considered to be a retail use, not an agricultural use. The site has buildings used for retail sales, storage, one residential property, as well as large areas of hard surface in use for access, car parking and storage, all of which have occupied the site for a considerable number of years. Not much growing of plants occurs on the site, and the agent has advised the majority of products sold on the site are imported. The site is therefore considered to be a garden centre rather than a plant nursery, due to the fact that retail sales constitute the primary use of the site. Any growing of plants on site is considered to be ancillary to the use of the site as a garden centre, rather than a separate use in its own right. The use of the site for predominantly retail sales is long established, and the site's therefore considered to fall within the definition of previously developed land, and as such, is considered to be appropriate development within the green belt. And that is providing, of course, that it does not have a greater impact on the openness of the green belt. The illustrative drawings show a proposal which would result in a significant reduction in the floor space on site of five hundred and fifty-eighth metre squared, and which would, with the replacement of hard standing by gardens and landscaping, also decrease hard surfacing on the site. Accordingly, it's considered the proposal would not have a greater impact on the openness of the green belt. The site is part of an area identified in the Waverley Borough Pre- Submission Local Plan for possible removal from the green belt. However, it should be made clear that this is only a suggestion about a possible release of land from the green belt at this stage. No information has been put forward in respect of the loss of the commercial use of the site. However, it's noted the proposal does not incorporate the whole site, and an area is shown outside of the Redline site to be retained as a wholesale nursery. The poor condition of a large number of buildings on site is also noted. The MPPF supports the reuse of previously developed land, supports sustainable development, and significantly boosts in the supply of housing, and these have been balanced against the loss of the commercial use of the site. While it is considered that the council currently has a five-year housing land supply, there's still considerable need for affordable housing across the borough. The proposal includes the provision of thirty per cent affordable housing on the site, which is a significant material benefit of the proposal. The site is also included in the council's land availability assessment as a site which is suitable, available and achievable for housing. The inclusion in the land availability assessment does not mean that the site's an allocated site for housing, but it is a material consideration. The proposal is for thirty per cent one-bedroom units, fifty per cent two-bedroom units and twenty per cent three-bed units, which would provide a suitable mix of house type sizes and tenures. The indicative schedule of accommodation demonstrates the proposed residential units would meet the government's space standards, and there's a suitable provision of private usable amenity space. The application site's close to two listed buildings and the conservation area. It is considered that, as shown on the illustrative drawings, the proposal has little potential to harm the heritage assets. However, conditions relating to design, materials and layout are included to ensure that the houses respond to and reflect the form and detailing of surrounding houses. The main concern raised has been about the acceptability of the access to the site. The Highway Authority has confirmed they are satisfied the proposal would not have a material impact on highway and pedestrian safety. They have agreed that sufficient information has been provided to demonstrate the proposals would result in a net decrease in the usage of the existing private access road by HGVs and the overall vehicular movements that currently take place. While the access cannot achieve a width of four point eight, although there is now a suggestion that they would be able to do that, the Highway Authority has confirmed the four point five metre shared surface provided is acceptable. The existing carriageway is in an access corridor under the control of the applicant, which is wider than the existing four point five metre wide carriageway. A shared surface access wider than the existing is possible and achievable, and conditions one and six combined to provide the ability for the final internal private road to be satisfactorily designed and improved for all road users in this regard at the detailed application stage. The county highway authority has advised verbally that for emergency vehicles, the guidance of three point seven metre width carriageway is sufficient for access, and this can be reduced to two point seven metres over short distances. They noticed there is a good forward visibility along the length of the access road, and the road winds at the bend. Thus, two larger vehicles travelling in opposite directions would see each other in plenty of time. With respect to the possibility of vehicles being parked at either side of the access point, manual for streets two acknowledges that, especially in urban areas, parking invisibility displays is quite common. Document also notes that while the presence of parked cars at a junction is common, it's not been found to cause accidents, as people tend to take more care when travelling in and out of the access. While several comments have been received suggesting the provision of alternative access to the site, it's noted the applicant does not own or control land that would allow them to provide a different access point to the site. The illustrative plans provided demonstrate the proposal can provide sufficient off-street parking to meet the council's parking guidelines. Members have been provided with detailed comments by the highways authority on the update sheet. This explains in detail what's been considered, and how they've arrived that their recommendation of the proposal is acceptable and would not be detrimental to highway and pedestrian safety. It's considered the illustrative layout demonstrates the proposed houses could be accommodated on site without having a detrimental impact on visual amenity, and demonstrates that the houses could be provided on site without having a detrimental impact on trees. None of the trees on site are the subject of a tree preservation order, although trees on some of the adjoining lands would have protection by virtue of their location within a conservation area. The illustrative plans show a distance of at least sixty metres between proposed houses and properties in Wheeler Lane. Proposed houses are sited eleven metres away on one side and twenty-one on the other from Red Veers cottages. The closest house to Jubilee Cottage is twelve metres away. At the distances shown and with the proposed orientation, the illustrative plans show the properties can be provided on this site with no detriment to residential amenity. Members' attention is drawn to the update sheet, which not only has the detailed comments from the highways officer, but also has three additional objections. The application is recommended for approval, subject to the conditions in the report. The application is recommended for approval, subject to the conditions in the report.
Thank you, Jenny. Again, this is a public speaking item, and I believe the procedure has been explained to those who wish to speak. May I first invite the opponent, Jacob O'Mahony, to speak? Good evening, Mr. O'Mahony. You have four minutes from when you begin speaking.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to state that it's the density and scale of the development we object to, and not the development per se. We need more affordable housing, and we'd be very keen to enter into a negotiation on a win-win in this situation with the developers. I want to tell you a little story today. I consider myself to be a reasonably sensible individual. I served in Afghanistan, I've got an MBA, MA, and a BSc. But yesterday, I started a fire in my mother-in-law's house. Five fire engines later, two police cars, and an ambulance, I was taken off with burns. But thankfully, nobody died, and it's just my pride that is severely injured. I mention this because the access to my mother-in-law's house is comparable to the access to proposed development. However, had I been a critical casualty in this instance, I would have found myself blocked in by two fire engines, which, in their own right, had issues navigating the narrow access. I want the planners and committee to be absolutely assured that house fires are not some kind of footnote. They happen when stupid people do stupid things. While access is sufficient for a fire engine, I had five at my house, and I had no critical casualties. You know, question mark. Look, moving on here, let's not dress it up. If I believe the developers were being saved from traffic gridlock by demolishing a local asset to build 20 houses, and if I follow the highways logic, I should be thankful that it's not a business that actually does business that it's supposed to be doing. You know, heaven forbid I might get a nice coffee down the lane or pick up some plants. The point is simple. The data the developers used to get Mr. Richard Cooper to waive all of the standard requirements for visibility, width, and safe passage is simply not valid today, and may at worst have been gamed. Five days of data submitted, dressed up as 10 days, taken on a private road owned by an interested party, significantly different to a study conducted in June 2016, and off-the-scales different to a study conducted in October 2016. Mr. Cooper claims that 2014 peak is a suitable baseline as it shows the worst case, and that's a great point to make. But I absolutely reject the concept that the worst case should be applied annually at a seasonal business. Who goes gardening in the snow? What's more, a retail business generates traffic when it's open. Homes create traffic at peak times, when Wheeler Lane is already backed up, and online shopping and service vehicles thereafter. The Trics database is a great database, and it was used by the developers to show an insignificant 400% increase at peak times. Unfortunately, the developers also forgot to include in their calculations the three properties that currently use the access road. So, the development of 20 houses, plus the two remaining houses that will stay using the access road, will generate, on average, one point... Sorry, wrong. In an average day, three-point... Average peak time day, 3.5 vehicle movements, which for 25... Wrong. 22 houses will generate 25 car movements at rush hour. It's 25 car movements at rush hour. That's double the volume estimated by Trics, based on observed data in the lane. In fact, I calculate that looking at... I could be looking at an eightfold increase in vehicles, with even the most conservative estimates showing a region of 300% uplift throughout the day over the winter. I'm going to finally finish just by saying, it's density and scale. If there were eight to 10 houses that we were talking about here, community wouldn't have an issue. We're concerned that this pushes local infrastructure and safety beyond limits.
Thank you, Mr. O'Mahony. Now, may I invite the representative of Whitely Parish Council, councillor Barbara Kinness, to speak? Good evening, councillor Kinness. You also have four minutes from when you begin speaking.
Thank you very much, Chairman, councillors. I think the parish council very much would want to agree with the previous speaker on the number of the points he has made. We are anxious to promote housing development within the parish, because we're very much aware of our need for additional housing, and affordable housing is a particular priority for us too. But what we are not happy about with this current application is that the proposal provides safe and suitable access to the site. You have seen the photographs of the aerial view of the site and the access road coming off Wheeler Lane. You perhaps also noted the proximity to the junction with the very busy Petworth Road, which is an A-road. It carries a great deal of traffic. In addition, along Wheeler Lane, we have a doctor's surgery, only a few... a couple of hundred yards to the west of that access road. We have two bus stops, the pub. That road is extremely busy, and at its narrowest point, this small access road comes out onto Wheeler Lane. The traffic officer assures us that the minimal width requirements are met by the additional... There is room for a slight additional widening of the existing road, but it is passing very close to the properties on either side, both of which have high fences, and there is very little ability to move in any direction. And we're worried too about the pedestrian access, because undoubtedly with 20 houses, we are going to have mothers with children, children by themselves, trying to come down that very narrow access road at peak times when traffic is going to be there. We're not convinced either that large service vehicles are going to be able to easily pass cars entering the site. And for those reasons, we're really not happy to recommend the adoption of this site at this stage. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Kinness. Members, I open it up to you. Councillor Thornton?
Thank you, Chairman. Well, what I was saying before about the applications that we see now with the big houses, three-bedroom plus houses... I mean, it ticks all the boxes for me. Six one-bedroom houses, 11 two-bedroom houses, and three three-bedroom houses. I can see that the access is... I couldn't make the site meeting, but I did drive up there this afternoon just to have a quick look, and the access is tight. They widen it. I think, you know, I don't think we can refuse it just on the access. I mean, 10 houses isn't going to make any difference on the access. You've got 20 or 10. To me, it's not going to make any difference. The access is still the same, so I would be inclined to agree with the officers on this one, but I'd like to wait till everyone else says. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Thornton. Councillor Peter Martin?
Thank you, Chairman. I've got three general areas that I'd like to speak about. One is the highways. The second one is on the loss of commercial use. But the first thing I'd like to speak about and get an officer view and a legal view is on the principle as to whether this is developed land. In the determining issues, we're instructed that the... Jenny has outlined the fact that she regards this as previously developed land, and this is a technical opinion. And I'm sorry to say I wish to challenge that, and would like to move that to become a matter of judgment. I wonder if you could put up the aerial photographs, please, of 2001 and 1999? You've got in our things, we've also got 2001 and 1999. Have you got that available to share?
Chairman, we haven't got that on screen now.
Okay, well, let's just take the 1999 one on the right, and the one from the other photographs that you showed us, as far as I can see, were even more dense in terms of their buildings. I'd like to draw members' attention to page 66 of the report. And this talks about the MPPF defining what previously developed land is. And in the second sentence, it says that the MPPF excludes land that is or has been occupied by agricultural or forestry buildings from being able to be called previously developed land. And in that case, it would therefore become Green Belt, and a higher test is then applicable. My view is, if you look at the picture on the right, and I know that the site is split in two, and they conveniently drop off the bit at the bottom, because it's not part of the planning application, my view is that these are primarily nursery/horticultural buildings dedicated to the growth of plants, and that as they are horticultural, they are therefore agricultural. And therefore, this land... I know that the point that Jenny has made, our planning officer says that it's primarily a garden centre, and the rest of it is ancillary. I have to say, having visited the site and seen all of the derelict glass houses and so on and so forth, it seems to me that substantially, this was a matter of a nursery, a commercial nursery, and these were horticultural buildings. Therefore, they should be excluded. Or at least, it's a matter of judgment as to whether they are... fall into this category of being not previously developed. Before I go any further, I would just ask for a view again. And I've already written to our planning department. I've got a view, I know what they say. But I would also like a legal view as to whether this could be not a technical opinion, but a matter of judgment.
Officers, would you like to respond? Erica?
Thank you, Chair. Okay, I've not been on the site, so I'm not quite sure what the extent of the retail use is from the side. But from Jenny's point of view, what she's read about, whether it's agricultural, as in nurseries, or whether it's a retail, that's correct. So I think it probably would be a matter of judgment for members whether or not there is a substantial retail... or the main use is retail as opposed to a nursery-agricultural. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Martin, would you like to respond?
Thank you. Well, in that case, if it's a matter of judgment, my judgment is that this should not be regarded as previously developed land. And that's my first point. And so my second point is on commercial use. I'm always unhappy to lose land or buildings which are dedicated to commercial use and employment. And this is dealt with on page 68 of the report. I'm very saddened that I think that the report does not develop the argument on this loss of commercial use very fully. Interestingly, in the previous application for the Elstead application that we saw, there was considerably more discussion about the loss of commercial use on a very small site in Elstead versus what I think is a very short part of this report on what is a very substantial loss of commercial use. I would... Within this, it talks about the developer not having submitted any information about whether the site is a viable business and whether they've marketed the site. It seems to me curious that the developer is wanting to retain a section of the site for continuing commercial use. In other words, it's already a viable site in part, but not in total. That seems to me to be curious. It's either viable commercially as a whole, or it's not. And it's almost having your cake and eat it, where you get a bit of development and you have a piece of commercial use as well. That seems to me to be curious. And I think that no strong case has been made here for the loss of this as a commercial centre. And therefore, I would object not only on the fact that this is not even previously... It has to be classed... it can't be classed as previously developed land, but I would also object because we are losing the commercial use. So those are the two particular points of objection that I have. When it comes to the very difficult question of access, I do understand Mr. O'Mahony's view. And I have to say, I'd be pretty angry as well if I were in his situation. However, this is very difficult, because the Surrey County Council highways person in the shape of Mr. Cooper that he mentioned has given a view. He was on-site, he has listened to the objections of residents, including Mr. O'Mahony himself, and he has written an additional paper which is before us tonight. This makes it very difficult for us to object on these grounds, although I entirely understand the objections. I think if it were to go to planning... to the Planning Inspectorate on Appeal, if this were turned down on those grounds, I think we'd have a very difficult position where we have completely disregarded the highways view, which has been twice stated, and where the relevant officer was on-site and heard the views of residents. So although I'm very sympathetic to that view, I don't think I can support an objection on that basis. But I do object on the basis of, I don't believe this is actually previously developed land, and then I'm not happy with the loss of the commercial use. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Martin. Councillor Holder?
Thank you, Chairman. I also visited the site on Monday, and I agree with the residents that the possibility of two cars passing each other on that very narrow entrance is pretty marginal. The access is a point, and particularly so when there is traffic on Wheeler Lane, because when the mums are delivering their children to both Chancellor School and Barrow Hill School between 7:00 or between 7.30 and 8:00 in the morning, the traffic on that Wheeler Lane goes right back to Gazza Lane. It is enormous, there's about 30 or 40 cars queuing up. It would be impossible for anybody to come in or out of the new development if that was the case. So, however, I do think that the usage of that entrance and exit would depend, of course, on the amount of houses built. And as this is an outline application for up to 20 houses, I see no reason why the eventual application shouldn't be for a smaller development. And in that case, I would be prepared to accept the officer's recommendation.
Thank you, councillor Holder. Councillor Bolton?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wished to make the same point as councillor Peter Martin, but unfortunately, he preempted me. In my judgment, this is unjustified development on Green Belt land, and I cannot support it.
Thank you, councillor Bolton. I tend to agree with both you and councillor Martin. I don't have the problems that some people have with the access drive, because being there at the site visit and taking some measurements myself, from fence to fence, they could put a 5.5-metre-wide driveway in. I'm slightly concerned about the tortuous bend at the top of it for getting large vehicles around. And also, like councillor Holder, actually, access and egress from the Wheeler Lane into the site concerns me greatly. But I am thankful to you for bringing up the point and that it's a matter of judgment as to whether this is previously developed land. Somebody else had their hand... Oh, councillor James, I do apologise.
Thank you, Chairman. Whilst I think we all are sympathetic with that access, we all know that it isn't right. There is absolutely no reason that we could use for refusing it on access grounds, although we all know that it's going to cause... we all know that it's going to cause problems, but the Highways have categorically told us that it's okay. So I would, although it's one of the reasons that I hate it, because I drive up and down it, that we can't refuse it on access grounds. But, the site is called Wheeler Street Nurseries, it's not called Wheeler Street Garden Centre, it is a nursery, it continues to be a nursery. The retail section, we didn't go through it on the site visit because it's so small that it wasn't even deemed, it's just in front of the bungalows, got two wooden sheds and a little open space with a few plants on it. They use, some of the, the first greenhouse occasionally has some plants in it when it's a time that people buy plants, but other than that, it is a nursery. The fact that 60% of it isn't being used is not my problem. That's their problem, they could use it, but it is a nursery, it's not a garden centre at all, I'm really sorry to say to the officers, it's not squires, it's not secrets, though you don't have a cup of coffee there, and the officer did say that in an agricultural use of a nursery, you could have small scale retail, those were her words, it has very small scale retail within a plant nursery. It's not a garden centre that has small nursery in it, it's the other way around, it is a nursery, and for that reason I'm very grateful to councillor Martin for his, but, so I'm afraid I will not be supporting the officer's recommendation this time, something else I might be. But, it also says in the application, on page 57, from Surrey Wildlife Trust, it advises the council should require the applicant to ensure that the proposed development will not result in a net increase in exterior artificial lighting. Now, as you can see, there is no lighting in the evenings on that nursery because there's nobody there, so how could you possibly stop all the residents having a light in their house, the new ones, a light outside as their car comes up? We couldn't possibly do that, there's no condition that we could stop them. So there is no way of controlling no more light on that area, so I'm really sorry, but that's Surrey, well, they say that, and there's nothing that we could do, if you drive up, your light comes on to get in and out of the car, so we can't stop polluting that area for light with 20 houses. You know, a few small ones, you possibly could, but it is a nursery, and I'm really sorry, and it's not a garden centre. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you councillor James. councillor Williams?
Thank you, Chairman. It may be showing my age, but I've been going to the nursery for 40 years plus, it's always been a nursery, it has always grown its own plants. That has reduced in recent years, but it's a nursery.
Thank you. Elizabeth, would you like to comment?
Sorry, Chairman, just to add to this debate about the existing lawful use and whether it constitutes previously developed land, as we've advised, it is a judgement, but at the same time, the definition of previously developed land, which is set out in your report at page 66, does come from the National Planning Policy Framework and is there to guide you as to whether or not it is PDL. Now, if, as I think you're going down the route of, you're suggesting that you're not satisfied that it's previously developed land, I think it would be better to express that in terms of that you're not satisfied that sufficient evidence has been put forward that it is previously developed land, because that is the challenge of the applicant, that they satisfy you as to what the lawful use of the land is. So I just throw that into the debate, rather than suggesting that you categorically come down one side or the other, because it is something which is for the applicant to satisfy you on, in terms of the use of the site over a period of time, that would be 10 years, that it would become lawful, in terms of either a mixed use or a retail use, or in fact, if they can't satisfy that, it would remain agriculture, as councillor Martin's alluded to. So I hope that's helpful. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Elizabeth. councillor Upton?
Thank you for that advice, and I endorse what you've just said, but we've already experienced, from one of these speakers, that the client is fairly selective on what application of information gives us, and that would bother me on making that submission of accepting data from his source.
Thank you councillor Upton. councillor Tom Martin?
It's perhaps churlish, but if the, if this site is not being used as a nursery, as is being put forward, is that therefore not a breach of planning? That it's not actually being used for the conditions that it's got, because it doesn't have retail use. So if the applicant believes that it is under retail use, then they don't have permission for that either, and therefore it would be enforcement action, or am I, I'm just trying to get to, you know, it's either one thing or the other, and if it's not, if it's not a nursery, then it's a garden centre, and it doesn't have permission to be a garden centre.
Thank you, Chairman. The only thing that would change the position as to whether or not there's enforcement cases, whether it's now immune from enforcement action by virtue of the 10-year rule, and that doesn't mean we've missed taking action, it just means that we won't necessarily have been aware of it or alerted to it, and that, of course, is why that 10-year rule exists in law, because the government has indicated a long period of time, if a situation has, even if it's morphed into a mixture of uses, without generating complaints or being enforced, then it should be allowed to remain, because after that period of time it becomes the normality. So it may technically be a breach from its original use, but if it's, if they can satisfy the council, it has become that use, and that is its lawful use with evidence, and that becomes its lawful use, even if it's never got a planning permission. Thank you.
councillor Martin, you'd like to come back?
And therefore, if they can't go back as far as 10 years, then it would be a breach of planning?
Yes, if the starting point was clearly agriculture, and that change has taken place within 10 years, it's still theoretically capable of enforcement. I suspect what might happen, a consequence of this, it may trigger an application for a certificate of lawfulness, but that's for the applicant to decide.
Thank you. Any other members wish to comment before we move to the recommendations? councillor Bolton? Sorry, Holder, sorry.
Thank you, Chairman. Just to say that after I left banking, I spent a year working in a nursery, and several plants were imported from Holland, and several were grown on site, so it was both a retail and a nursery, and I think this is the case in this instance. I've seen people tendering Christmas trees, which are obviously imported, but obviously plants are being grown on site as well, so it is both a retail and a nursery. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor, sorry, Hunter, sorry, I've forgotten your name.
I look in relevant planning history, full permission was given for intensification of existing retail use to include the sale of imported fruit and vegetables and horticultural products. Full permission was given in 1981.
Thank you, members. Any last questions before we move to the recommendation? So there are two recommendations. The first recommendation, A, is that subject to completion of a section 106 agreement to secure affordable housing and a contribution for the provision of education, play-in pitch and player improvements, and recycling containers, and subject to conditions 1 to 27 and informatives 1 to 14 as set out in the report, permission be granted. May I have those in favour of the recommendation to grant?
That's three.
And those against?
That's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Those abstaining?
One.
Thank you, members. Recommendation to grant is rejected, so we don't have to move to recommendation B? Members, we need an alternative recommendation. councillor Peter Martin?
Maybe I can start the ball rolling on this. I would put two objections to start with, that the committee is not satisfied that sufficient evidence has been put forward as to whether this is previously developed land. I would also say, my second point would be, not satisfied that sufficient evidence has been put forward to justify a loss of commercial use. Now, the third point, and here I would lean on our officers, as to whether the Surrey Wildlife point that councillor, that James has made is, would be useful. At the bottom of page 57, it does say that the applicant should ensure the proposed development will not result in a net increase in exterior artificial lighting, and that all exterior lighting complies with above referenced best practice guidance. I don't know whether there's something there which would be helpful or not, I suspect not, but I would just like some views on that. And then finally, on the question of the Highways and the access, I'd just like a view from officers as to whether it would be helpful to add that. That is a concern expressed by the committee, albeit the Highways have made a very strong case, and it's very difficult to sustain something, in my view, on that, but would that, would that improve an objection, or would it take away from our objection to this?
Peter?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Just picking up on the Surrey Wildlife point first, and Surrey Wildlife Trust have raised that point, but I think it's a detailed matter that could be addressed at that stage, they haven't raised an objection to the scheme on that basis, they've highlighted it, and they would need to demonstrate compliance with that requirement were to come forward at the detailed design stage. We haven't got that level of information, given the outline nature of the application, so I think it would be difficult to add that as a, as a reason for refusal. In terms of the concern regarding the highway matters, fully understand some of the comments that have been made by members, but I think by trying, it would be very difficult to make a technical argument based on the reasons you've given, and I think we'd be putting down an unjustified reason for refusal or concern there. We can add an informative that it's raised concern as a point for the applicants to take away if they're going to look at some of these concerns, but recommend that it's not part of a reason for refusal. Hopefully that's helpful. Thank you, Chairman.
councillor Martin?
Thank you, yes, I accept that, I think that's helpful. I would like to add it as a concern. I think it weakens the argument, actually from the opponents to the scheme, to say that, you know, eight houses are okay but 20 are not, because then you're accepting in principle that the access is okay, it's just a question of how many. But I do think it's worth putting in as a concern that was expressed by the committee as to access, and I think that would be helpful to put that in. Would that be, in the officer's opinion, sufficient as an objection, or do they, would they recommend that we consider any other points to raise an objection?
Thank you, Chairman. No, I think we've got the two points there, and I've put some wording round a more detailed reason, if you're happy to. The only additional points I'd recommend is on page 92 of your agenda, you've got recommendation B, which deals with the section 106 matters, and we'd recommend that they'd be effectively reasons three and four as well. So if the chairman's happy, I'll run through the draft reasons, if there's any further apologies.
Could I just add one more thing?
Of course.
I have to say, the only other concern that I have, and this is where it gets very difficult, because I'm then disagreeing with the Highways people, but as the local county councillor, I'm the guy who has to pick up the pieces later on, when the traffic becomes unbearable, and people can't get out onto Wheeler Lane, and then can't get out onto the Petworth Road. And I'm a little concerned that we haven't got sufficient money, or there's no money for any transport improvement involved, I mean, where to be, another application coming back, and so on and so forth. I would like to see a contribution to some sort of transport improvement in terms of what we could do with the junction with Petworth Road, or with the junction of this access into Wheeler. I'm thinking forward because I'm presuming that there'll be some future application again, and indeed it may not be, it may be the whole site, I don't know. I wouldn't be happy with that because of my earlier stated objections as far as the green belt is concerned, but I do think in any future application, some contribution to transport matters would be entirely appropriate and justified.
Elizabeth, would you like to comment?
I'd say we can take that point away and discuss that with the Highway Authority as an additional concern coming out of the debate. Clearly they've looked at it carefully, and they've looked and rationalised as to whether or not they could ask for that contribution in this case, and haven't recommended it, but we can certainly reinforce the point that that was a concern and feed into any further discussions on the site. Thank you, Chairman.
councillor Upton?
Chair, what is the consideration we have to give to the expertise and technical knowledge of the Highways Authority, when we are also dealing with local knowledge and a more intimate knowledge of what goes on those particular points? This other gentleman works on a remote site from the problems of day-to-day running, and he works on ordeal cases, obviously. I thought we represented the local point of view from the residents and our own local knowledge of that particular site, I thought they might have some bearing on the case of transport.
Comment? Yes?
Chairman, perhaps I could answer that. I think it comes back to the advice we give you in relation to every planning application we present at committee, as helpful as we can, and it comes back to these two lists of issues, which, you're quite right, in the end, the committee are making an assessment of a planning application against the full suite of planning considerations, including the technical matters on the left and the more judgment matters on the right, but we, none of us in the room are experts on everything, and there are certain areas in planning terms that government guidance has been very clear for a very long time, that planning authorities should seek technical advice on certain matters, and the county council are your statutory consultee on highway matters. So they do look at the schemes carefully, in this particular case, they've looked at it very carefully, been on site, advised residents, advised members, advised officers, and they've given us their advice. Now, it doesn't mean that there aren't instances where you would disagree with them, and they do listen to local information, they take it into account, and quite often we pass back considerations from residents to say, well, have you taken this particular point into account? And they quite readily come back and address it. But what I would say to you is, the difficulty is that if you do disagree with them, what the advice is that you should really have alternative technical evidence to refute what they're saying, because otherwise, if you include a reason for refusal which refutes that of your own expert, an applicant will be entitled to go to appeal and challenge you on it, and then we'd have to justify that, and that's where it does get quite difficult on appeal in terms of reasonableness of decision-making. So I hope that's helpful. Thank you.
I rather fear that reply, Chair.
Peter, would you like to run through your outline reasons? Oh, sorry, councillor Byham?
Just a quick point. If we end up with a situation where we have a green belt land situation rather than previously developed land, should we not be asking for an increase in the affordable housing provision?
That's a very interesting question, Chairman, and if the outcome of the decision and the applicant's considerations, they're unable to satisfy the council that it is previously developed land, I think with the planning history that they probably won't be able to make some form of case, but it's for them to make it. But if you were to get back to the point whereby it had agricultural lawful use, and therefore it was a site in the green belt, which wasn't previously developed land, you are talking about an application for housing development on effectively a greenfield site, where they would need to make the case that the benefits demonstrably and significantly outweighed any harm, and with green belt, it's about very special circumstances, so there's no fixed threshold in the current local plan, but the onus on there would be to satisfy you that the benefits even more so outweighed any harm. But actually, I don't think we're quite at that point yet, but that might be a discussion for the future on the site.
So could we have a precis of the reasons for refusal, please?
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, the first one would be suggested as insufficient information has been provided to demonstrate that the site comprises previously developed land. Consequently, the proposal comprises inappropriate development in the green belt. No very special circumstances have been put forward to justify setting aside harm to the green belt and any other harm. The proposal therefore conflicts with section 9 of the NPPF, policy C1 of the local plan, and policy RE2 of the draft local plan. That would be a first reason for refusal. And the second, the proposal results in a loss of employment on the site without sufficient information to demonstrate that it is no longer required for employment purposes, contrary to paragraph 22 of the NPPF and policy IC3 of the local plan. And as I previously mentioned- And as I previously mentioned, I won't read them again if chairman's happy, but reference to include under recommendation B on page 92, reasons one and two, and they would form effectively reasons three and four as part of the reason for refusal. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you, Peter. So, members, the revised recommendation is to refuse for the four reasons just outlined. All those in favour, please?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10.
And those against?
One.
Abstentions? No. The councillor. Councillor Hunter hasn't voted, no? That item is refused. So we move on to item B1, WA 2016. We'll let the people leave us first, I think. Right, so we move on, item B1, reference WA 2016 0820, Hambledon House Van Lane Hambledon, GU64HW. Jenny, would you like to introduce the application to the committee, please? Sorry, councillor Bolton.
We have on our green papers a revised recommendation that permission be refused. I propose that we accept that recommendation. No, no, it's on the green papers, B1.
We're discussing Hambledon House Van Lane Hambledon?
Yeah.
Yes.
Page eight got refused. I propose that we refuse.
Well, we can save an awful lot of time then, as the recommendation is to refuse. This is to do with the lack of the reptile report, which are now in hibernation until next April. Councillor Holder, you'd like to comment?
Thank you, chairman. I was the ward councillor who recommended a referral for one month in order to get two out of the four surveys that were acquired by Surrey Wildlife. The two that were done were in fact wild birds and bats, which were agreed, and the two which weren't available were reptiles and badgers. The applicant has sought the use of a person called Arbtek, who is an expert on this, and Arbtek produced on the 19th of October reports on both the badgers and the reptiles, which were submitted to Waverley Borough Council, looked at by the planning officer, who thought that they were suitable, and recommended acceptance, as you can see on page 95. Recommendation is that this application be granted. However, since then, Surrey Wildlife has come up with an opinion on page 109, that the Great Crested Newts, sorry, it's page 106, that the Great Crested Newts should be considered to further survey. However, the Surrey Wildlife has said that in order not to prevent this application being refused, they would be happy if we were want to accept the application, that they would impose a condition that no development would take place until the Great Crested Newts survey had been completed. The same now applies, I gather, to the reptiles. So I would say that the same thing applies. If we can accept this application, which is a good application, the five houses instead of six was exactly what we wanted, the houses that were there at the moment are derelict commercial houses, and they should be removed, they're an eyesore, and the design of the new houses with their various bits are better than the original. It's a good application. So if this application is accepted with the condition that Surrey Wildlife must be satisfied that these conditions on the Great Crested Newts and the reptiles are completed before any development takes place, I think we should accept this application.
Thank you. Officers, would you like to comment?
Yeah, if I can try and explain. There were four surveys. The first two were for the Great Crested Newts and bats. Surrey Wildlife Trust are happy with those. Further reports were produced on badgers and reptiles. Surrey Wildlife indicated they were happy with the badger one but not the reptile one. If you have a look at the update sheet, the advice I had from Surrey Wildlife was that the council shouldn't be recommending approval on a scheme unless they're absolutely certain that there's no protected species on the site, and without the surveys, we can't be sure of that, so we can't actually meet the requirements of the Act. That's why the recommendation is now for refusal, because they now won't be able to do the survey work until April at the earliest. And just to explain, because we had the surveys for bats, badgers, and the Great Crested Newts, we were able to, we would have been able to put a condition on about the mitigation measures. We can't do that with the reptiles, because we don't know whether we have any or not, and so we can't put a mitigation condition in place, and we can't be sure that protected species are present or not on the site. So that is the advice I've had from Surrey Wildlife, and that's what you've got in the update sheet, which has resulted in the recommendation for refusal. Hope that is clear.
Thank you, Jenny. Councillor Peter Martin.
Thank you, I understand that. But if you refuse, presumably the applicant then has to start all over again, put a fresh application, pay for a fresh application, and so on and so forth, with only one slight change, is there not a case for them to defer until such time, as that can be done, rather than refuse?
Erica, Peter, fight it out amongst yourselves.
The only point I was going to make is that they would potentially benefit from a free go in terms of the planning fee, if it's done within the year, it maintains the same applicant, they would. Background, I can't comment on the cost for actually submitting the application, but the planning fee is there. The point for members is to consider is whether it's actually reasonable to hold an application in abeyance until April next year, and officers don't think that would be appropriate, but that is something, if members thought it was. The only thing I would add to that is, all the documentation we've got with the application at this stage would, in any case, have to be updated to the current position at the time of the submission of the application at that stage. So some element of additional work would have to go into that and update the application either way on that basis. So, sorry, that's probably not quite what you wanted to hear, but hopefully that sets out my view, and I don't know if Erica has anything to add. Thank you.
Councillor Holder.
For allowing me to come back, then can I, on the basis of what councillor Peter Martin's already said, apply for a deferral for six months? I think that would be in the interests of the applicant and everything else. Thank you.
Erica?
Thank you, chair. I'd just advise members not to go for deferral and just follow the officer's recommendation to refuse, because then we run the risk of the developer then turning around, and then, you know, the risk would be on the council, so they can actually easily resubmit the application. They probably would have done most of the work, they'll just need to do updating six months' time. They may not even be able to do the survey in six months. We don't know what's going to happen in six months' time, so it's probably best to refuse it, and then they can always resubmit or appeal or whatever they want to do. Thanks, chair.
Councillor Bolton.
Thank you, chairman. As the instigator of this trouble, thank you very much, Jenny, for clarifying the various status of all these newts, bats, badgers, and reptiles. I believe I did put a proposal forward that we accept the recommendation.
Do we have a second afoot that we accept the... Two, councillor Reynolds, thank you. So the revised recommendation is that this recommendation be refused for reason one as set out below, insufficient information has been provided to enable, et cetera, et cetera. All those in favour?
That's 11.
Against?
One.
Any abstentions? We've beaten the 9:45 deadline, so I thank you all for your attention. No, haven't we finished? Oh, no. I thought we'd come to the end. What page are we on now? Right, where are we? Oh, sorry, I do apologise, members. So item B2, WA 2016 1828, Tesco Express Portsmouth Road Milford GU85HJ. Jenny, would you like to introduce this application to the committee, please?
Yeah, I can try and talk fast if that will make you happier. Right, okay. Location plan, the Tesco Express on Portsmouth Road, we probably all know. Just the aerial photograph to show the site, and some photos. Just so you're aware, the one at the bottom is the delivery van actually at the back of the property. So although I've seen some comments saying that they only park outside the front, they can actually get in, park round the back, and you can see there's room for cars to get out, even if that delivery van is there. The parking spaces, there's four existing here, and then a grassed area behind. What they're proposing is four new ones, so you'd have tandem parking, but you'd get two spaces for each flat. It's one residential unit at the moment, division into four, so you've got one there, one there, one there, one there. New external staircase, and then all the doors to all the flats come off that central courtyard. That's just the ground floor, so obviously that's the Tesco's. The front elevation stays the same. The, what you can see with the existing right and left elevations, the only change that you would see is going to be that central staircase. All the windows remain exactly the same. This staircase, the developer has agreed to remove. And on the rear, again, all it changes is that external staircase, no changes to windows at all on any of the elevations. Right. It's in the green belt, but within the defined settlement boundary of Milford. Obviously the Tesco Express on the ground floor. Proposal to change the first and second floor to provide four flats. No new windows provided, very little change to the external appearance other than the staircase. Four new parking spaces, as I've said. They've provided information to show they have sufficient off-street parking still remaining for the Tesco Express, even if the flats are provided with this parking. And basically, proposal's considered to utilise the building in a more efficient and satisfactory manner, provides additional residential dwellings without harm in heritage assets, visual amenities or the character of the area or neighbouring properties. So approval is recommended accordingly, subject to the conditions in the report.
Have you finished? Crack it out, quick.
Yes.
Thank you, Jenny, thank you. Members, I open it up to you, and councillor Upton followed by councillor Bolton.
Thank you, chair. Both Dennis Lee and myself being ward members of that particular area feel that this was originally a hotel anyway, on those upper floors when they were accommodated for accommodation in the old days. It's not going to make a great deal of difference to the building's usage anyway, it's just a modern adaption, and we're both in agreement with it.
Thank you. Councillor Bolton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My only query was concerning the cars and parking. Are officers happy with waste and refuse disposal? Is there room for all the waste lorries, refuse lorries to come in and out? I couldn't see any discussion about it in the text. Thank you.
Jenny?
Thank you, chairman. I fully support it, and the sooner we agree, I can actually get there to pick up my milk before I get home.
Chairman, page 161 in the proposal, there is recycling and bin stores provision, and with the access that's available for vans and lorries supplying the store, I can't believe that that's going to be a problem.
Councillor Upton.
May I just add, chair, that traffic movements and highways problems are existing anyway, and it's not going to make any difference to that.
Councillor Holder.
Thank you, chairman. I support my colleague from Milford. This used to be the Red Lion pub or hotel, and I think it's an excellent option, and I would support the officer's recommendation.
I think this highlights the point about a lot of our buildings within the borough and elsewhere. Why haven't they done this before? With so much lost space. I've been to function when it was still a pub upstairs, and there's masses of space, obviously. What have they been using it for? What have they been wasting it on?
Thank you. Members, any more, any last questions before we move on to the recommendation? I'm still going to beat that 9:45 deadline. So the recommendation is that, subject to conditions 1 to 8 and informatives 1 to 2 as set out in the report, permission be granted. May I have those in favour of the recommendation to grant?
And that's unanimous.
Jolly good. Members, there are no items to consider in exempt, so I declare the meeting ended. Thank you very much.